All right, folks, the nine thirty time has arrived and I'd like to welcome everyone to the November fifteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting of the Lebanon County Commissioners. And as is customary, we will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me now in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comment. Mr. Weisner from back at the Gap.
Good morning Commissioners, David Weisner from Fort Indian Ten Gap with the back at the Gap update. After our record-setting year last year with utilization, we're off to a good start this year. As of sixth November, we've already had twenty-one thousand four hundred and three personnel train at the Gap. So, pretty doggone good start for the beginning of the year. Getting ready to go into our Thanksgiving week slowdown, but even with that, the week of the twelfth through the eighteenth, we have over five thousand troops training on the Gap. So, a little slowdown for the week of Thanksgiving, we're only going to have a training load of eight hundred and thirty-eight soldiers. Everybody goes home and does their leave. And then, the week after Thanksgiving, we'll be back up with over twenty-seven hundred troops. So, the reason I bring that up, it shows that the Gap where it used to traditionally be most heavily used during what we call our end-of-training season, which is loosely defined between the end of April through the beginning of September, that training distribution is becoming more of a year-long thing, which has impacts to our communities and all that, hopefully for the better. Live-fire training today and tomorrow, which I don't know how many mortars they're actually going to fire today and tomorrow in the snow, but they're liable to. You'll hear them, but we will continue to have busy flights into out of the Muir Army Airfield, second busiest heliport in the United States Army, and the Bolin air-to-ground bombing range.
Where do the jets come from when they fly up?
They come from all over. We have multi-services. New Jersey Air Guard, we get a lot of NAV Air, which is Navy aircraft that will come in from various points offshore. And really, what the Bolin air-to-ground range trains is, Pennsylvania Air Guard has a very important unit, it's an air-to-ground tactical air controller unit. What we're getting is probably more training for is those airguard, air-ground tactical controllers, as they bring in jet aircraft and direct them on target. So, very important training. We know it's loud, but we appreciate everybody putting up with the noise. I have trouble losing my voice, so that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
You have a nice visit with the Paragon. Yes. Public comment.
Yes, I'm the judge of elections for Fifth Ward West, and I wanted to, I went next door first, and I wanted to come over here and thank the Commissioners and the voter-registration office for all of the support and coordination and organization. This was maybe the third busiest election I've been involved in since the Ronald Reagan election in nineteen eighty, but it was also probably about this meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate that positive. Yeah, I have some people, I can give you a number.
Thank you.
Okay. First, we have our minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes in the Army?
Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections or deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as printed indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So, the minutes are approved. And Madam Treasurer?
All right. We have money cash receipts of eleven thirteen and fourteen of two million one hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and seventeen cents. That brought us to a cash balance of two million four hundred thirty-four dollars, four hundred thirty-four thousand and three dollars and seventy-four cents. We had expenditures this week of two million two hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Our tax claim was two thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and five cents. So, our cash balance comes to one hundred and eighty thousand eighty-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
All right, I have a motion in the second to approve the Treasurer's report as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the Treasurer's report as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Report is approved. Thank you.
I have one thing, and I forgot to bring it along up now. I have a resolution from Fulton Bank. I'm in the process of changing the signers for the controllers, for the deputies in the Controller's Office and for the Treasurer's Office. You already did for Citizens, but now I'm trying to get Fulton and Fulton finished. So, I do have that resolution downstairs. It just needs your signature to be able to change those names.
We need a motion to approve that?
We make a motion to change the Controller and Treasurer deputies at Fulton Bank.
Second motion?
All right, we have a motion in the second to permit the Treasurer to change that account. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll probably be up for signatures.
Okay. Our Human Resources ladies?
Good morning. Shalidra, Director of Human Resources. Leanne Shank, Human Resources Assistant. Under Personnel Transactions, Resignations and Terminations, Norma Slanger, Secretary B., Termination Effective November fifth. Timothy Clements, Deputy Warden of the Prison, Retirement Effective January twelfth. David Heisler, Jr., Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Prison, Resignation Effective November sixteenth. George Cruz Rosario, Full-Time Correctional Officer, Training, Removal November fifteenth. And Cody Reese, Juvenile Probation Officer, Resignation Effective November twenty-seventh.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
All right, I have a motion in the second to approve those resignations and terminations. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. They're approved.
Moving on to Ethamalay and Leaves of Absence, Karen Unger from MHIDEI, twelve weeks of Ethamalay effective October fifteenth. Jeremy Breton, Probation Services, twenty-two days of family Ethamalay effective October eighteenth, returning November nineteenth. Holly Leahy, MHIDEI, twenty-four days of intermittent Ethamalay and Ethamalay full-term effective October thirteenth, returning November nineteenth.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve the Leaves of Absences, red. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Moving on to Changes of Status, Transfers and Promotions, Tiffany Sherman, promotion from intake officer in domestic relations to conference officer in domestic relations at the rate of one thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents by weekly effective November nineteenth. Teresa Schlebach, Change of Status from Image Clerk in Domestic Relations to Docket Specialist, no change in her rate effective November twenty-sixth. And Zachary Laser, Change of Status from Full-Time Correctional Officer, Training to Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Prison at the rate of fourteen dollars and fifty cents per hour effective December second. And the following three correctional officers are all transitioning the same way, and that is Max Knott, Robert Knoll, and David Weber. And the following two correctional officers are moving from part-time Correctional Officer, Training at the Prison to part-time Correctional Officer at the rate of thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents per hour effective December second, and that is Robin Meyer and Jessica Smith. And Carly Ebersol, Promotion from Casual Call Developmental Assistant at Renova to Part-Time LPN at Renova at the rate of sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents per hour effective November nineteenth.
Move to approve.
Second?
All right, I have a motion in the second to approve those changes of status. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. They're approved.
Moving on to new hires, Domestic Relations, Amanda Schweitzer, Image Clerk at the rate of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents by weekly effective November twenty-sixth. Domestic Relations would like to hire Abigail Baptiste as an Assistant Enforcement Officer at the rate of one thousand seventy-six dollars and ninety-five cents by weekly effective November twenty-sixth. Human Resources would like to rehire Stephanie Knowles at Benefits Coordinator at the rate of nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-one cents by weekly effective December third. And the Sheriff's Office would like to hire Carrie May, Full-Time Deputy Sheriff at the rate of one thousand one hundred and one dollar and twenty-one cents by weekly effective December third.
Second?
Second? All right, I have a motion in the second to approve those new hires. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So ordered.
If there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt each transaction to the Salary Board?
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion in the second to approve the Salary Board notations. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Mandated Conference Seminars, I have Derek Hilton from LCDES would like to attend the Advanced Emergency Medical Dispatch in Allentown, January ninth through the eleventh, three hundred and fifty total registration fee with mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement, twenty-four credits mandated by PMA. Nicole Rula from Children and Youth would like to attend the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Christian Youth in Child Welfare System, Mechanicsburg, December eighteenth, mileage, meals, and tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Anna Marquez, Ryan Ramper from Children and Youth would like to attend the Methamphetamines Training in Mechanicsburg, December thirteenth, mileage, meals, tolls reimbursement, eight, six credits mandated by DHS. And Audrey Rocko and Sally Berry from Probation Services would like to attend the Executive Board and Chiefs Meeting in State College, December sixth and seventh, lodging reimbursement mandated by the Executive Board of Tallow Probation Chiefs.
Second?
Second motion?
All right, I have a motion in the second to approve the attendance at the mandated conference, as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So moved.
Under requested, Eric Fowler and Jeremy Leflore from LCDES would like to attend the JNET NPA Chiefs Conference in State College, December thirteenth and fourteenth, with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve the requested seminar. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Jocelyn Stachem from MHIDEI would like to attend the Mental Illness in the Criminal Justice System in State College, December third, with mileage reimbursement.
Second?
Motion in the second to attend that mental illness workshop as requested. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Carla Arnold, Amanda Brown, Kathy Melville, Christine Mundes, Amanda Ramos, and Brenda Sandiego from Probation Services would like to attend the Front Desk Safety and Security Training in Harrisburg, December sixth, eight hundred and thirty-four dollar total registration fee with mileage and parking reimbursement.
Move to approve the request by Probation Services.
Second?
All right, I have a motion in the second to approve the Front Desk Safety Workshop as requested. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So moved. Thank you, ladies. I have Jennifer Cuzzo, the President and CEO of Visit Lebanon Valley, for a presentation. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. And there are a couple highlights. I know you've seen this presentation before, but we have updated it. And in my first nine months of office, this is what has transpired. I hope there's a little more than that. There we go. The very first week that I was in office, we applied for a grant from the pipeline company, Atlantic Sunrise. And after several months, we were awarded the grant, and we have worked all summer on putting together the outdoor guide that we promised we would. And I have one for everyone, which I'd like to share. It's a small field guide. Oh, thanks. Thank you so much. That highlights four major topics. One is waterways, one is rail trails and parks, and one is wildlife and observation in that regard, and the biking is also is the floor. So, these are the pictures that we're taking, the quotes that we have. I really think it's a nice little piece. As we look at the whole Lebanon Valley, we have so much to be proud of. And of course, this is the guide that came out. I'd like to acknowledge Level Eleven and Marshall Kramer specifically and his vision and graphic design of the project. Couldn't be more pleased. So, now it's on bigger and better things, and we're working on the guide for next year. And in the outdoor theme, the guide cover next year will feature a beautiful photo from William Wards of Middle Creek. And it looks to me like a Monet garden. It's absolutely beautiful. Some of the new things that have happened, and I'll get into that a little later, but there is a very interesting fact that every dollar invested in tourism marketing returns three point four-three in tax revenue to the area. So, we know our worth, and we know what we're doing is making a difference. And it's just nice that everyone gets on the same page and sees that. So, one of our marketing campaigns this summer was a billboard campaign throughout Harrisburg and Camp Hill and Lancaster. And these are some of our digital billboards. Of course, we promoted the outdoor guide as well. And we have radio commercials, which I will play this one example.
Did you know there are great round breweries, wineries, and distilleries in the Lebanon Valley? Have you tried a Seltzer Smockhouse Ale or an Opera Funt Stout? Did you know that you could take a boat ride through the oldest and sistic transportation tunnel in the U.S.? Did you know you can see top-grade entertainment at one of the oldest open-air theaters in the country? Make a day of it. Simply Lebanon Valley.
I love that she says that. It's very fancy.
Did you know there are?
Okay, we'll move on. Social media. We've had over a million impressions with our blog posts and our Facebook ads and our streaming television. We try to focus on different subjects every month. November is shop small, shop local, and it's all about antiquing and shopping. October was about corn mazes and farm markets. And that's just an example. Here is a commercial, television commercial that we produced. So, the story behind that is when we applied for the grant for the outdoor guide, we thought we'd like to really capture the essence of the Lebanon Valley and take a drone over the farms. And we actually, that's my neighbor's farm, and I called and asked him if I was allowed to do that, and he said sure. And we happened to get the cows sprinting back to the barn. And I thought, that's pretty cool. I don't think I've ever seen them do that. Somebody rang a dinner bell or something. So, I thought there should be some way to conclude every commercial, and we say simply Lebanon Valley till the cows come home. So, that's our little tagline there. We created a shopping and antiquing guide for the Lebanon Valley, highlighting many of our businesses. We have blog posts every week. We've attended the Old Anvil Days and the Makers Fest and the Union Canal Days. We hosted a National Tourism and Postcard Week, open house with Mr. Donald Brown from Myers Town, and he brought in all his historic postcards. We support First Friday efforts by having artists and musicians come and perform. We have a nice expose in the Central Penn Business Journal highlighting the Lebanon Valley and the top ten things to do in the summer. That appeared in July. We got some great press. My associate, Mary Wiggly, wrote an article on Oktoberfest and breweries and the distillery in the Lebanon Valley and the history, and we got four pages of Pinpoint Magazine. And there's more, the history. We did a digging up the past, and Mary wrote an article on that for Enjoy Local Living. We've attended the Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland, and New York Trade Shows and Marketplaces, encouraging their tours to include Lebanon Valley in addition to Lancaster and Hershey. We have a partnership, and it was fifty dollars. We have raised that partnership for next year to one hundred dollars. I think that for the things that you receive as a partner, I think we need to have self-worth and show that it is more than worth your money and support. And we certainly appreciate all our partners. This is the news that happened just last month. The House concurred in Senate amendments to send House Bill fifteen-eleven to the governor for his signature. He has since signed that. And this legislation now requires online travel companies like Expedia or Travelocity to remit their state and county hotel tax on the retail rate of the room, as we know most of our hotels do. But in closing this loophole, the state is estimated to realize an extra twenty-three point eight million dollars in additional revenue. And that will be dedicated to tourism office statewide promotions and marketing. Their current budget is four million, so it's, I can't do the math, four point four times.
Six times.
Six times. Yeah, you're right. Thank you. Six times what they're used to. So, my efforts in reaching out for a little bit of that to be spent and bragging about the Lebanon Valley is imminent. Your people might be extra busy next year. Some of the trends we're seeing in tourism nature, people want outdoors, they want to be outside, they want dining al fresco, they want healthy foods and pairings and breweries and wineries, and they want to shop local and support neighbors. And these are our four main targets for next year. Leisure is a term that the industry uses when you go on a business trip as business and you take an extra day or two on either side for leisure, and they blended it to become leisure travel, and that is trending as well. I'm working with the Lebanon Valley Conservancy and the Community of Health Council to promote an event called Tour the Lebanon Valley Bike Ride, which took a year off and needed someone to run it. And these two organizations are doing the very thing that I think needs to be done, and it's all to benefit land preservation. So, that will be coming up next year. And I think I touched on that. This is the cover of our guide for next year, focusing on Middle Creek. And so, what I asked a gentleman to do was, I don't know if everyone knows, that Pat Kirwin at the Expo got beautiful television screens that he put up around the Expo. And he asked me for a commercial or two to put on there. And I said, I think I can do better than that. So, I had this gentleman compile all our commercials into one, and this is what's playing to represent the Lebanon Valley. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Very impressive, as always, and I appreciate all the work your volunteers have done, and you and Mary. And I mean, it's just awesome what you've done to pull this thing up to such high visibility. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Jack, do you have a comment or a question?
Yes. As a visually handicapped person, a little bit of voiceover might be helpful too.
Okay.
For people like me.
That's a good point. I'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say ditto to that, Jack? Yeah.
Now we can turn it off.
Thank you very much for the update, Jennifer.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it. As Commissioner Phillips said, you know, I think you're very visible in the community, and things are just coming along. I couldn't be more pleased. Thank you.
Pull another chair.
So who's going to handle the introductions this morning?
I could do that. That's all right. So my name is Brett Holland. I'm with Stiefel. Mike Battistelli, business partner with Stiefel as well. And we have Corey Hardy, the Vice President of Portfolio Specialist, if I got that correctly, from Legg Mason, actually. And Ricky Ruiz, he's Vice President and Regional Director, also with Legg Mason. So they're representing, again, a piece of your overall portfolio today, and they're going to talk about that after we give a quick update of where we're at to the year. So if you have your report there, if you open up like we normally do, we'll kind of keep it the way that we normally do it, and just turn to page one there inside the front cover. And again, working our way from the top left there and kind of working our way around the page, just showing the performance. This is through the end of September, so through September 30th is what it is. And then like, as normal, we'll give that kind of year-to-date up-to-date number after that. But the combined portfolio, showing for the quarter ending quarter was 4.21% for the quarter, again, third quarter of this year. Year-to-date number was 4.7%. And then the one-year number, going back to third quarter or fourth quarter of last year, including a full 12-month period, is 9.01%. And then you can see the three-year number of 9.21. Over to the right, sort of upright quartile there of the page, the top right section of the page, you can see there under Quarterly, where it says QTD, underneath the beginning market value at the beginning of the quarter, beginning of the third quarter, was $123,853,577. And during the quarter, there were net withdrawals between a kind of deposit or withdrawal of $5.1 million, and then appreciation of a little over $5.1 million, giving us at the end of the quarter a balance of $123,938,422. The one-year number is just right beside that. You can see, the only thing that really changes there a whole bunch is the beginning value was $121 million. Between deposits and withdrawals, there were a net number of withdrawals of $8.7 million, and then appreciation of $10.7 million. And again, ending at the end of the quarter was that $123 million dollar number. Any questions on any of that at all? Point out one other thing is the bottom left-hand side, this is our allocation. Again, this is at the end of the quarter. Again, showing equity there, we always point out because, like we sort of break the record every quarter, we say the same thing, our equity there, that's not all stocks of the 67.53. Of that, we also have part of those REITs, those real estate investment trusts that are part of that. And if you break those two out, the actual equity or stock position is 62.05%, which is well within our investment policy statement. The REIT portion is 5.48%, so around five and a half percent. And then the fixed income, which are your bar charts here, are listed at 28.8%. And then a cash of about 4.02%. Questions on that at all? I just want to point out one more thing briefly, because I don't want to take time away from the fellows that are here from Legg. On the combined portfolio performance, where you see the quarterly numbers and the year-to-date number of 4.7, that's lower than our historical average has been, obviously. And I know you guys are trying to keep down your actuarial numbers and all that type of thing. And if I can have you just go to page six, if you would. And underneath the bar charts are listed there. There are different pages that are always in our report every quarter, but if you see combined portfolio, kind of the first line out of there in bold underneath that, and I just want to, I guess, just mention this, you can see the quarterly numbers, the 4.21. Again, this is your whole portfolio. Year-to-date number, 4.7. But I guess what I just want to mention there is, you can see last year, 2017, it was up 11%. 2016, it was up eight and a half. 2015, it was down 2.8%. '14, it was up a little over eight. And 2013, it was 18.2. So, you know, if you look at these individually and kind of a little bit more grand, there's a lot of ups and downs along the way. But again, if you look at that as an overall five, as an overall period of time of, like an average return, how those numbers come out to about 7% is what they come out to. But there's a lot of ups and downs along the way. And we obviously have that throughout the year, too. It'd be breaking down even more than that. But, so I just wanted to, I guess, just mention that. And that's, again, ending the quarter and just some individual internal numbers. Questions on that at all?
Do you, I think this is obvious, if you look at a 10-year return, you anticipate that the 2008 year will be dropped off by the actuary, and that's going to change our 10-year return significantly. Is that a fair assumption?
If we go back to 10 years, it takes into some of '08, the tail end of '08, when things were really getting ugly, and it's a little over 9% is what your 10-year average was. You have to keep in mind that there's a poor time when we start looking at those numbers, and you're also kind of coming out of a lower period, too. So that's where that number is, a little over 9%.
But impacting our actuarial assumption.
I see what you're saying. For the last 10 years, it should be... That's correct. We're just coming off of that time period, that 11, 10, 11-year time period. And I don't know, from an expectation standpoint, or anything that I was trying to allude to there is to, you know, for us to expect 9% for the next 10 years, may not be too realistic. But just trying to get some historical perspective on, you know, markets go up and down, we have good years, we have better years, we have great years. And unfortunately, and that gets obviously into, you know, wherever it are, the date, I mean, unfortunately, right now, the, you know, the overall market performance for the year is somewhat flat, slightly up, and, you know, we don't know what these gentlemen all talk a little bit about, maybe they anticipate to the end of the year, but, you know, we may not have one of those years where we're at 7, 8%. So I'm just trying to set some expectations in there, speaking of that. But I can give you some year-to-date numbers now. Again, just keep in mind, when I gave you this report, they're not audited numbers. There's as good of numbers as we have at this point. So through yesterday, we're up about 0.75% per year. So obviously, we know what happened in October. It was a really difficult month. And then these folks will talk a little bit more about that. The balance on the portfolio, again, through yesterday, is $121,037,120, or, yeah, $120. And Brett had mentioned about the asset allocation hasn't really changed a whole lot since the end of the quarter. We are kind of at the upper end of our equity range. We go 50, between 50 and 60, with 55 as our target. So we don't really feel like we should be changing anything today. We're comfortable with where the allocation is. It's kind of just right on that upper limit. And for now, we're comfortable keeping it there. We do tend to do some rebalancing as cash needs, monthly cash needs are needed, we will tend to take a little bit more, frankly, from the equity side, just to keep the balance reasonable. But for right now, we're not looking at making any allocation changes. So we'll pause there. Any questions about the quarter or about the year-to-date specifically? All right, so we'll turn it over to the folks here from Legg Mason.
Great. Thank you. Again, just by way of introduction, my name is Corey Hardy. I work at an affiliate of Legg Mason called ClearBridge, which manages a portion of your overall portfolio. This is Ricky Ruiz, who is an employee of Legg Mason. We work together, do services area. So just as an introduction on what I do at ClearBridge, I am what they call a portfolio specialist. So my job is to basically be a hybrid. So I spend about 60% of my time in our home office, working with the portfolio managers who actually pick the stocks for this portfolio. So Margaret Petronno and Peter Corbeau. And then all of our dedicated analysts, we have 13 analysts at ClearBridge. So I understand what they do, why they're doing it, and then 40% of my time on the road articulating that to investors like yourselves. So just a quick reintroduction to this strategy, because I think it's important, especially given the volatility we've seen in the market recently. Flipping to slide 15 on the Spiral notebook that you all have in front of you, this is how we kind of think about constructing our portion of your portfolio. So a lot of times with, this is a large-cap growth portfolio, and we're investing in companies that have typically higher rates of growth than the market and are larger-scale businesses. Typically, what you'll find with managers who do this kind of execution is they invest in one type of growth and don't really look at any other type of company outside of what they define as growth. We kind of buck that trend a little bit. What you're looking at on slide 15 is how we define growth three different ways. So the idea here, overarching theme here, is that we're not going to put all our eggs into one basket. We're going to try and diversify our approach to growth, and by doing that, hopefully be able to outperform in a variety of different markets. So we have stable right there in the middle, is a big gray circle. It's a bigger one because it makes up more of the portfolio. That's going to be anywhere from 60, 50 to 65% of your portfolio. And these are going to be good, high-quality companies that are defensible if markets get volatile. So you see Budweiser or Microsoft. Usually, these are scaled businesses. They're ones that everyone is sort of familiar with. They have a little bit of pricing power on top of their competitors because of the scale, and they're growing at slight multiples to the market, but not huge multiples to the market. So again, the idea there is to be defensible. And then on either side of them, we have sort of differentiated growth. So we have on the right, the select types of growth companies. These are going to be more your high-flying growth companies. So things like Amazon, Visa, biotech companies that fall into that bucket. These are awesome. These are fun to talk about, and they can add a ton of juice to the portfolio, but if markets do get volatile, they could also hurt you a lot. So we want to be respectful of how much risk those have embedded in them. So they're going to be anywhere from 15 to 35% of your portfolio. So we're not going to be over-allocating to those super-high-flying momentum names. And then lastly, and I think this is a really unique part of how we think about growth, we have a cyclical approach to growth on the left there. And these are going to be really good, high-quality growth companies, but they've stubbed their toe for reasons we think are fixable. So on paper, they look more like value companies, but they've historically been growth companies. A great example of something like this would be Chipotle. After some of the food sourcing issues that they had, the stock really took it on the chin, and we thought, this is something that they could definitely correct in a pretty easy way, and we added it to the portfolio when it was really depressed. So that's going to be anywhere from, you know, 5 to 15% of the portfolio. So not a huge part of the portfolio. Taking that in aggregate, you have a portfolio that is hopefully capable of either keeping pace with our benchmark, which is the Russell 1000 Growth Index, or outperforming year in year out. So we talked a little earlier about how varied the return on the market has been over the last couple of years and on your portfolio as a whole. This strategy has done a really nice job of regardless of what's driving the market, being able to either keep pace with or outperform, outperform the benchmark five out of five down to a year starting in 2012, which is really tough to do. I really think it's because of that balanced approach to growth that you all have in your portfolio and that we try to employ it for you. So with that said, any questions on how we kind of think about constructing the portfolio before we get into more of what we've been seeing in the market? We're good. Excellent. So I'm sure you've all seen the sort of volatility we've gotten in the market the last couple of months. To be completely candid with you, this is not something we've been all that surprised by at ClearBridge. We have been saying that volatility had been uncharacteristically low. So looking at last year, it was really an anomalous year for the stock market. You had seen extremely low volatility, and I think people were somewhat lulled to sleep by that low volatility. So they came to expect little volatility in the market. So to illustrate just how crazy last year was in terms of historical averages, there had literally never been a year in stock market history where every single month on the S&amp;P 500, the market closed positive. So every single month had a positive return. That's never happened before, and it happened last year. So people had come to expect very low volatility, and then February of this year, people kind of got hit in the mouth, so to speak, and, you know, kind of jolted back awake from a big bout of really quick volatility and pronounced volatility. As active managers who take a much long-term, a longer-term approach to investing, we think that's a great thing, because it's really difficult to find compelling opportunities for the long term when markets aren't volatile, because you can't pick off top stocks that are trading unnecessarily cheap because of sentiment. And when markets are really just trading up and to the right, that's really tough for us. So the return of volatility has been a good thing for us. We've been able to find some stocks that we think are actually trading really cheap relative to their long-term growth profile. One of them we've added to, which was Facebook. So Facebook has obviously been under a lot of scrutiny lately. That's for years have been a stock that has just gone up and up and up and up. And we actually, quite frankly, were trimming it a lot along the way because we thought it was, you know, getting a little bit out ahead of itself. Now that it's come down very meaningfully, we're actually now starting to add. So that's one example of a stock that we've grown incrementally more positive on. In the tech sector as a whole, one of the things we've been very cautious about is the growth of what they call the FAANG stocks. So for those of you who are not familiar with this, it's Facebook, Amazon, Netflix, and Google or Alphabet. Those stocks combined have really been a big driving force for the stock market as a whole over the last several years, basically since 2015. And for us, we think, yes, these are great, high-quality companies, but the valuations on some of these companies are getting a little bit lofty. So we want to be respectful of the fact that, you know, trees don't grow to the moon. It's not going to be like that forever. So we have a great allocation to a lot of those companies within this portfolio, but relative to the benchmark that we use as like our scorecard, we actually own a lot less than them. So we own about 5 and a half percent less than the benchmark. So up until the third quarter, which are the numbers we're looking at today, that had actually been a headwind for us. So that hurt us on a relative basis. And as long-term investors, we were absolutely okay with that, knowing that there was more risk in them than we felt comfortable taking. So we were comfortable with our underweight. Since the end of September, you've seen a lot of those names, specifically Facebook and Apple, really get hit pretty hard. Those stocks have traded down pretty significantly. We have a very sizable underweight to Apple, so that has been a big boost for our portfolio. So since the end of the quarter, we've actually picked up about a percent on a relative basis on the benchmark. So our portfolio is now, year-to-date as of the end of yesterday, is now about 6.2%. And our index is up about 5%. So we've picked up about a percent on the benchmark. We feel really good about what we own. We own differentiated areas of tech outside of those, you know, Facebook, Amazon, Netflix, Google names that we feel are doing really well. A great example of that recently is Red Hat, which is a differentiated technology company. So sort of business-to-business technology, not business-to-consumer, which is all those other names that we just talked about. And that name was acquired by IBM for like a 60% premium. So it was a big boost to our portfolio so far this quarter, especially in a quarter where tech has not really broadly done very well for people.
Sure. So when you, when you take advantage of the volatility and look for some undervalued stocks, do you keep typically a predetermined amount of cash on hand, or do you liquidate some equities when you see a bargain somewhere else?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's, it can be either of those things. So sometimes we will strategically sell out of names as the market goes higher and higher and higher. Sometimes, you know, we own names that have done extremely well, and the old adage is you don't want to be greedy when others are fearful, and fearful when others are greedy. As our names look really great on paper, we usually start to trim those, and we'll either put that money into cash, or we will redeploy it right back into a name that we're like, this is just way too cheap right now for no reason. So a great example of that right now is Facebook, and we're trimming names that have done well. So we're just taking from the winners and adding to the losers, so to speak. And if we don't see a loser in our portfolio, we'll just hoard it in cash. And if we don't see a loser in our portfolio, we'll just hoard it in cash.
No other questions?
Is there anything in the market in general? I didn't really touch on our outlook going forward. Anything in the market in general that makes anyone a little nervous that you want to talk about? No, this is the most bullish room I've been in. So, thank you guys. Hopefully, you're going to make the market go higher, but...
Interest rate impact?
Yeah, so interest rate impact is one of the big reasons we've seen this volatility. So, as the Federal Reserve starts to increase short-term interest rates, that's a tightening measure. So, it reduces liquidity in the economy. Anytime you have less liquidity in the economy, things start to contract. That's a bad thing for the stock market. So, incrementally, yes, that's bad. But we want to look at the rate of change of those increases and also what base, where are you starting? And we're still historically low on interest rates. And the rate of change is the big concern right now. People think that the Fed is going to really just jack up interest rates to undo all this goodwill that they created. We're hard-pressed to believe that. We think they're going to be a lot more measured in how they go about increasing these interest rates than common sentiment would have you believe. But again, as long-term investors, we're kind of loving the commotion that it's causing because it allows us opportunities. So, one of the reasons why we were saying we think volatility is going to tick up was because of interest rates and because of inflation, those are our two big reasons. Great. And then just really quickly, I'll just say, going forward in the market over the next 12 months, going all the way back to 1950, you've never seen a year, a 12-month period after midterm elections, where the stock market was negative. So, going all the way back to 1950, every single midterm election year, after midterm elections are over, the 12-month period following that, you've had a positive return. And the average of those 12-month periods is 15.3% returns. So, historically speaking...
He'll be back in a year.
Just for the S&amp;P 500, so you guys have a balanced portfolio. But, so historically, you have, you know, history is any guide. Historically, it should be a good 12-month period for the stock market. You also have some additional factors that are kind of technical in nature. So, corporate share buybacks, so companies buying back their own stock. There's been about $700 billion worth of those announced so far this year. But only 400, 500, 400 of them have been executed. So, there's this gap of $300 billion that's just waiting to come into the market. So, that should be like an invisible hand kind of propping up stocks on the back end. So, you have a little bit of technical factors. And then lastly, and as long-term investors, one of the things we kind of hang our hat on is fundamental returns. So, what are the earnings like and what is the revenue like for these companies that we're looking to own or that we own? So far this quarter, we've seen close to 90% of the S&amp;P 500 report earnings. You've seen earnings at about 28% year-over-year growth. And you've seen revenue at about 10% year-over-year growth. That's the fastest growth rate since 2011. So, you've got fundamentally, for earnings and revenue, they look great. You've got historical context for the next 12 months looking great. You also have some technical factors that should really prop up the market. So, over the next 12 months, regardless of the volatility pattern, I think equity should continue to be a great place to be.
Good. Thank you very much for the continued trust and confidence with Legg Mason and ClearBridge. We're certainly happy to be of service to the team, happy to answer questions. If anything does come up after the meeting, feel free to funnel that through your advisors. They'll get to us and, you know, happily answer any questions we have on the markets, on the portfolios.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Yep. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, everybody.
Just introduce yourselves from the record.
I am Bob Dowd, Director of the Department of Emergency Services. And I have with me Joe Riallos, Deputy Director of Emergency Management and Leadership. We are here this morning to give you an update, first, to give you an update on the summer's events in reference to the available funding and where it all stands.
Good morning, Commissioners. Leavenin County experienced the wettest summer and now year, one record. The county, as of yesterday, was eight tenths of an inch over the yearly record of 68.55 inches of precipitation. If giving you a handout, you can kind of see how that translates on the handout. Leavenin County experienced two major flooding events this past summer. The first being a week-long event from July 21st through July 27th. This event caused widespread flooding damage throughout the county. The second, on August 31st, was contained to the north and southeast areas of the county. FEMA conducted damage assessments in Leavenin County for both flooding events. FEMA separates damage reporting into two distinct categories. One, individual assistance, and that's for homeowners and businesses. And two, public assistance, which is for public infrastructure, facilities, that sort of thing. Damage estimates in the county are hard to place a number on. Hundreds of homes and businesses were flooded across the county. At the municipal level, public assistance damage reporting was sporadic, with only five municipalities reporting for the July event and only four municipalities reporting for the August event. FEMA assessed public assistance damages at over $1.6 million for the two events combined. To assist in the reporting process, DES implemented an online help-desk ticket system for each of the two storms. This allowed the municipalities an easy way for their citizens to report damages at their convenience. For those without internet access, DES, our office, actually took the calls over the phone and then submitted the reports to FEMA. Both flooding events, for both flooding events this summer, the county did not qualify for individual assistance. For public assistance, the county met its threshold on both events. But unfortunately, the state did not meet their threshold, and you have to meet both. We were approved for small-business loans for the August 31st event. And I'm still waiting on some numbers to see who took advantage of those small-business loans. And if you have any questions, Commissioners.
So, it's conclusive that the municipalities won't receive any assistance for their...
That is conclusive.
So, the state didn't meet the threshold, so that the feds didn't even have to make a determination?
That's correct. Both have to be met.
So, while it was devastating for Lebanon, York Counties, that sort of thing, it just wasn't enough in the whole?
And I think the important part here is that, especially when you get the public assistance for the infrastructure municipal level, the more we get in Leavenin County, the more that report can actually help the state overall.
So, the state's threshold is 18 and a half million, give or take a couple hundred thousand? So, just what the number was.
I don't have that. But it's important that all the municipalities report to us because it doesn't take many projects to add up quickly.
And do you feel you captured pretty much all of the damage? No, there was still some out there that you...
At the municipal level, the emergency management coordinators are appointed and they're volunteers. So, that makes it tough. So, we tried to, at our level, tried to help the municipalities out. Again, with the online ticketing system, we actually got out there, made calls to municipalities trying to help them out. So, it's a struggle. Basically, $491,530 is our threshold for public assistance. For individual assistance, they don't use a dollar amount. They use damage in the way of major, minor, to a building, to a structure. And unfortunately, most of our damage this summer was basements being flooded. FEMA does not look at flooded basement as meeting the criteria. They want flooding on the first floor, they want it above, up or above a socket, you know? That's when they start to really look at the structure.
Joe, I have a question concerning, I know the VOAD was activated. And if someone didn't report and then found out they don't have insurance, whatever, and their basement is still in need of clean out and they're not physically able, can they still go online and report that to get assistance from local volunteers?
They can, they could put a help ticket in. They can call us because the VOAD is active. I had a teleconference with them on Monday. And they are still cleaning out basements. They're helping out around the community.
Might expand on what that is.
The volunteer organizations...
Assisting after disasters.
After disasters, thank you. Voluntary group that has gotten together after Hurricane Storm Lee, they...
They were...
They got together?
Yes, they rejoiced after Hurricane Storm Lee. It's a group of volunteers that go out and help where they can, whether it be rebuilding walls or cleaning out basements, anything that they're able to do.
They've been doing a lot of mucking up...
And spraying for mold.
Spray for mold.
Yeah, I was at the Salvation Army Advisory Board meeting yesterday morning. One of the folks there said that there's still a lot of homes that have and even had water into the first floor. Still just getting around now to tearing out drywall and so on. So, that's been sitting a long time.
Yeah, the organizations, they kind of stood up a little later in this event, but now they're up and running. And the problem is, is what they usually only stand up once a disaster happens. And they're trying to be a little bit more proactive now and keep the organization, some regular meetings. But they are, they do have a full schedule right now. So, they're addressing homes.
So, if I, could I get back to the thresholds for a moment? Meeting these thresholds, it's fair to say, I guess, that locally, we have some work to do in making sure there are coordinators in place at these local levels. And what kind of assistance can the county provide? And ultimately, the municipalities have to identify someone, appoint someone, have someone in place to do that. It's easy to ignore when there isn't a disaster going on. But, you know, I'm sure you've reached out, but anything else on that?
The state law is basically each municipality responsible for having emergency aid. We're there, we're responsible for gathering information and getting it done. The process is difficult because the people filling these roles generally have a responsibility to compensate for the world fire. And to ask them to remove themselves from that, that emergency response element thing though, and the damage assessment and that paperwork, they can't be...
So, appointing the fire chief as the emergency management coordinator is not going to work?
We are working by 2019 to forward pushouts and help.
Okay. I got a question. Are you Bob? Are you done? You're not done?
No.
I have other items. Okay, go ahead.
The next item we have is the 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan is moving every five years. We'll ride that point, and Joe has some information on that.
Yeah, this is sort of a, what is the hazard mitigation plan? It's a plan to protect life, safety, and property by reducing the potential for future damages and economic losses that result from natural hazards. Over the last year and a half, the plan was developed with the help of MCM Consulting Group, Leavenin County Planning Office, GIS, DES, and all 25 local municipalities got involved with this. The Hazard Mitigation Plan outlines actions designed to address and reduce the impact of a full range of natural hazards facing Leavenin County, including drought, earthquakes, flooding, tornadoes, tropical storms, and what we see out there today, severe winter weather. Hopefully, we don't see too much severe winter weather. Human-caused hazards such as transportation accidents, hazardous material spills, and fires are also addressed in this plan. The interesting thing here, by participating in the development of the plan, municipalities may qualify for additional grant funding if that funding becomes available. So, they are basically required to be at the numerous meetings that we had over the last year and a half. And I'm happy to say we had very good participation in the plan. So, we are good for another five years.
In order to be eligible to adopt... Each of the municipalities will subsequently adopt this plan as their own. In order to be eligible to adopt it, they must have participated in the process. I think we have 100% participation.
100%, we do.
Good. So, you're looking for adoption of the plan here?
We have a resolution.
I have a slight correction. On page 112, Myers Town has MEY on the chart as opposed to MYER. I mean, it's spelled wrong. It's just minor, but you want to put your best foot forward. If that can be corrected.
We will correct that.
And then I do have a question. I want to acknowledge all of the wonderful work that has gone into this. It's really well done. The only thing that I see missing is a map of pipelines. And that is something that in a document of this caliber, for planners, I think that needs to be in there. I've mentioned this in the past, and I think it fell through the cracks. And I know we've changed personnel and things, so I thought I'd bring it up again. It's a reality that we have more pipelines and more are coming. So, I think we do need to track those that our responders are aware and what to do in the instance, call this number, that number, et cetera.
I thought they were, but I'll have to look again.
If you find them, please put them out. I only have X number of minutes to go through this.
It's a pretty extensive document.
I did not see them.
We will check into that. In order to change the plan at this point, though, we would have to go back to the federal government for a year again. That is a prime consumer base.
It was approved at the state level and then up to the federal level.
We can certainly...
Perhaps to solve the issue now, you could just do an addendum or something that could be not inserted, but be part of, be with it.
Certainly, yeah, we could put in, yeah.
But you do believe there is a component in there?
I do, but let me look, Commissioner.
Okay, sure. I mean, I only have so much time to go through it, but I didn't see it.
The plan is publicly available on a special website dedicated just to the forty of these plans.
I was really impressed with your addition of the launch sites to access this retirement for search and rescue. That was one of my favorite things. Thank you. I'll make a motion to adopt the plan and knowing that you'll look at an addendum if it's necessary.
Do you want to read it first, adopt it first? So, the resolution? Do you want to read it, Jen? The resolution? Yeah. No? It's not necessary.
I'd have a motion in a second to adopt the plan as presented. And based on the resolution, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a word.
Anything else?
Two additional things. A few minutes before we came up for the meeting, I received notification from the state that they are going to be approving...
that they are going to be approving regional projects. These are the first official regional projects that we've been able to successfully submit for approval from the state. This will result in a true regional phone system between us and York County at this point. And we push an invite out, anybody else who's going to become involved. At this point, it's going to be about two point six two million dollars that the state is going to push out to fund this entirely. And that also removes the maintenance liability for maintenance costs of our existing phone system. State will be paying that in the future as well because it's a regional commission.
It's been a long time coming, but that's, that's nice to hear that.
Happy that this is moving forward. We're going to keep pushing for additional regional components. It's going to save a lot of money and build some necessary dependencies into the public safety infrastructure that we have.
And you'll have other opportunities to do that as we, as we change out our system in the coming years?
Yes, yep.
So there's chances to get.
With the new building, this is a great opportunity to, to continue with regional projects. I've already reached out to all of our neighboring counties and say, hey, if we're looking at a new facility, anything we can do to reduce some overhead, care some services and get on the same page and give that at all, so.
Very good, congratulations on that.
The formal paperwork will be coming soon and I'll bring that to me. And then the final piece I have. There's a request that the commissioners designate me as having signatory authority for grants coming from FEMA to the Department of Emergency Services. Reason being, FEMA has recently transitioned to an e-grant system. It is causing some confusion. It is also removing us from, from the loop. So we don't even see the grants to ensure that signatures are done or that information is passed along as needed. So by doing this, it will put me in that loop. Me as designer, still bring everything to a meeting for formal review and adoption. However, remove the requirement for you to actually go into electronic system and do the signature.
I recommend. Got one of those, they don't. I recommend this because what becomes a little bit cumbersome is that as you rotate chair, the chairmanship of the board or so on, you'd be establishing a new user ID pass and so on to sign on and effectively approve what you've already approved in your meeting. So by having the director be the designate for it, that just provides for some consistency. He can do the sign on, he can do the, you know, check it off the box is essentially what it is.
Yeah. What I will do is the formal paper version will come to the meeting, just that's no more than that.
Yep. Sounds like a good idea. Do we have a motion to that in a second?
I'll second it. I guess I did all that for nothing.
That was actually part of what brought this to question how it exists. Because it's not just you, I've talked to several county directors. There's a lot of confusion now as to where. A lot of difficulty getting into it.
I already have a motion in a second to designate Bob Dowd as the signer for FEMA grants, right?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys, each other very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for Bob. If a municipality, in this case a township, there is a body of water in that township that is contained by a breast, in order to lower the level of that dam, the water level, must that township go through your department to do it? They don't?
No.
Okay.
They do need to go through, I'm not sure, D E P A or D E P?
D E P.
D E P, I believe.
Okay.
For the proper permitting, because that, depending on the flow into the stream, there can be effects downstream. But there are permits required to do that as far as I know.
Yeah, I knew D E P, but I didn't know by, by you. Because the dam in Ebenezer, for years, I had an agreement with, on a case of, in event of a lot of rain or hurricanes, they would lower it before it got here. And that didn't happen all summer. And as you know, like you just said, what has occurred here in the last five months has never occurred in recorded history, never occurred. And that dam should have been lowered because that dam, here again, that dam controls the water table in the village of Ebenezer. When that dam comes out, now the basements start flooding.
The only requirement for dam owners is that they have an emergency plan on file with us. And we have to make notification that that's available at our department.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Stay warm.
I think it's going to go change right now. The most recent forecast says two to four?
Two to four.
Two to four now is going up. That says up there.
One to three, yeah.
Four, nothing.
Thank you for everything but the forecast.
Good morning.
Good morning, Nicole.
I have grant modifications. So we are coming to the end of the grant terms for all three of our grants. We've already applied for the new Ross and Bojo grants that start at the beginning of two thousand nineteen, which means our current grant ends at the end of two thousand eighteen. And VOKA, if we haven't gotten a new grant application, will end at the end of June next year. So this modification is basically to kind of max out, to make sure we use all of the funds that haven't previously been used. So basically, for all three grants, we're maxing out employee hours. They're pretty much all grant covered for salary and benefits to the end of the grant term for Ross and Bojo. And then they're substantially covered under VOKA till that ends. And we'll make some changes just, you know, with new grant budgets. We're also replacing a couple of things. We have electronic scanners that are not, the ones they have, they don't leave work at this point. So our goal with that is to transition to electronic record keeping so that we can destroy paper files. Desk chairs, replace those. And we're translating documents into Spanish for victims and witnesses who, obviously, we have a Spanish population that we need to make sure are aware of what's going on. So those are the other things that we're adding into the grant to use up that money that we have. I kind of included all of that in the memo that I had submitted to you guys earlier this week. But the most important thing was to max everything else so that we don't have to lose any money.
Appreciate it.
So the motion is approve the modification of the right of.
So there's, there's one for Ross and Bojo and there's one for VOKA.
We need to do them separately, Jane?
Yeah.
Don't have a motion for the Ross on Grant?
So. Second?
Motion in a second to approve the modifications to the Ross on Grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered.
I'll move to.
I'm sorry, the VOKA?
Yeah. I'll move to approve the modifications to the VOKA grant.
I'll second the motion. All right, just have a motion in a second to approve those modifications. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I grabbed Dave Warner when I saw him this morning, sorry to interrupt his perfect.
I see that, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
Okay, I have a number of things to go through here with you and then go over nothing else. One item and then I'll have a quick executive session. The first item I have for you is a, the approval of a settlement agreement between Lebanon County and Avanco International of Fairfax, Virginia. The brief background on this, that all counties in the Commonwealth are having to approve this settlement individually. Back, I believe it's about a year ago, there was a potential of a breach of some children and youth information through a program that Avanco, as a software provider, as a provider, created and maintains. I don't believe there was any confirmation, there were actual breaches of any information for any Lebanon County consumers, to children and youth. However, CCAP, Penicillin Association, as well as Pennsylvania County Risk Pool, worked with Avanco to clean that up, essentially verify that there were any breaches. If there were any breaches, to then, you know, follow up and make the fixes or, or make any reparations to anyone whose information had been breached. And they concluded that those, that settlement could come to terms. The counties each, Avanco's asking each county to approve a settlement. Your solicitor, Dave Warner, has been involved with Crystal Clark, which is CCAP's solicitor all along the way. She's been in contact with all, all the solicitors of the counties. And we're at the, essentially, we're at the point at which they're asking for each county to approve the settlement. Lebanon County's portion of the expenses that Avanco incurred is about twenty-nine hundred dollars to remedy this. So we're asking for your approval on that settlement agreement.
Ruth, have we approved the settlement agreement as presented? I did have a comment that it's amazing how with all these challenges, that there's never any admission of wrongdoing. At the end of the day, you know, no one is at fault for anything. It's a, they look all that out.
But that doesn't matter, look the papers anymore.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, that's exactly right.
It also has a lot of, I can't even call it exceptions, double clock or whatever. I mean, sunshine law exceptions and.
We're the least documented. I think right through.
Yeah, twenty-nine hundred bucks, so.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the agreement as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Just to clarify, that's not twenty hundred, hundred dollars that comes to the county. That's what, that's the pro-rata portion that they spent to, you know, respond to the potential breach, so. All right. Then, next I have nominations for Lebanon County Conservation District Directors. Each year, we're required to solicit, list of organizations for nominations. And we've received responses from the Lebanon County Agricultural Land Preservation Board, from the Swetara Watershed Association, and the Lebanon Valley Railroad Trails and Lebanon County Farm Bureau. If you simply take the, I guess, the sum of the nominations you have, you have three nominations for Kristen Grumbine of Mount Pleasant Road, Lebanon, for the farmer director, and one nomination for Bob Arnold. And then you have four.
John Poff was eliminated on, on the Swetara watersheds because they were both public directors. And I, we didn't realize that the farmer was supposed to be the one. So it was simply Bob Arnold.
Okay. The nomination says Bob Arnold and John Poff as directors.
Right. And I called over to the Conservation District and asked, were they both public directors or was one a farmer? And they said one was a farmer and neither of them are farmers. And since Bob Arnold is the existing director, the Watershed Association chose to continue to support him because he was interested in continuing on.
So support, so then it's, it's a Bob Arnold, it's a nomination for Bob Arnold for public director?
Right.
Not John Poff?
Right.
Okay. All right, then in that case, in that case, you have three nominations for John Poff and one nomination for Bob Arnold. So it would be three for Kristen Grumbine, total for farmer director, three for John Poff, and one for Bob Arnold for public director. If you go with the nominations, which you may do or you may just simply choose to do otherwise. As Commissioner Litz said, Bob Arnold is, in fact, he's currently functioning as a treasurer, so. Would I, you know, if it's possible to keep him on there, I think we should keep him on this. Right? Okay. And we can, we can take, keep all three of them. Oh, 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 we need two public directors. There are two positions open. So you could actually do Poff and Arnold.
Oh, well, when I called over, they told me there was only one open.
No.
The nomination form has one farmer.
I never actually saw the form. But I just got a notice that they were due, so maybe it was missing, I don't know.
Yeah, we got, we got three forms back and we got yours as an email. So on the form, it has two, two public director openings. Just as a note, the Audubon Society has to be removed as a sponsoring group. They notified us, there's a process for that through the state conservation. Yeah. Okay, then the nominations then would be Bob Arnold and John Poff as public directors and Kristen Grumbine as a farmer director. Do I have a motion to that?
So move, if there's two public director openings.
I have a motion in a second to appoint those three folks to the board of directors for the Lebanon County Conservation District. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered. Okay. Then the last item I have is exemption of disabled veterans for, yes, for exemption from real estate tax. There are Guy Lebo of Cumberland Street, Lebanon, Diana Goldbach. There's a surviving spouse of a disabled veteran of fourteenth Avenue, Lebanon. David Howard of Holy Meadow Road, Lebanon.
Also move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to honor the disabled veterans by relieving them of the responsibility of real estate tax. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered. And related to assessment, you no longer have any appeals this afternoon.
Really?
Dan came up to tell me. However, he still does need to get some decisions from you. So it's up to you as to choosing a time. He's, he's open. And if you want to come to a certain point in time that we can do that, whether you, your average tax for one thirty, you can do one thirty-two, two thirty, whatever, whatever suits your schedule. Do one thirty because that's what I've worked into my schedule.
That backs me up worse. I need to have later if possible. And he told me I only had to be here at one forty-five for the, because two have been settled.
Okay. Do one forty-five. All right, thank you. I'll let you know. And then Controller Metley had forwarded a memo to you about an RFP for auditing firms. Bob, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, as requested, I sent out RFPs for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty nine audit. I sent the ten firms, six responded. Of the six that responded, mainly was the lowest. But I had some concerns with mainly as the fact that they only allotted three hundred total hours to the audit. Audit takes anywhere from six to seven hundred. The next, the next lowest responsible bid was from Boyer Ritter. And they're looking at approximately six hundred to seven hundred hours in their bid. They currently do Cumberland County, Judy Anna County, and there's another county. And they came in at sixty-two thousand five hundred a year for the three years. That represents from what we're currently paying, RKL, a difference of about eighteen thousand a year. And oddly enough, RKL can be the highest of the same.
Yeah. I must have gotten awfully calm for Boyer.
So, so my recommendation is we go Boyer Ritter.
Any questions for Bob? I have a motion to appoint Boyer Ritter, the auditing firm.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to appoint Boyer Ritter as our auditor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Okay.
Now, we're going to have an executive session now to assess what we can, if we can still stay or not, or?
I'm really afraid of the travel time with the snow.
Just tell me your letters. We don't have to care about that.
I mean, they're ready right this moment. I told them just now, I said, the moment everybody goes to audit, she might come to. Yeah. Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
So.